My one to the restroom, but there's somebody in. Hi, everyone. I know you're all here for me. We're going to start our meeting today. First, we'll stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call? Veronica?
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Present.
Ms. Alfaro. Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Mr. Oregan.
Present.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Present.
Ms. Valderas.
Present.
Dr. Neville.
Present.
Ms. Enriquez. And Ms. Cabral is absent tonight. So we have seven members present and two absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from September 5th, which is in enclosure A.
Second. Thank you. I make a motion to move out of order the student performance as well as the presentation.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. And the contract for the paraprofessionals.
Yes.
Yes, or sorry, not paraprofessionals. The contract approval.
Yes, for the new business.
In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, we have our Chelsea High School cantare, led by their amazing teacher, Mr. Michael Benarski. So I'll go ahead and let them take it.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We're performing two songs this evening. The first one is called "Go Forth With A Song." This is a song that we prepared for the Chelsea overdose vigil. Unfortunately, we weren't able to go perform it in person for the vigil. We had a scheduling conflict, but the students did make a recording that was played for the vigil. We're excited to share it with you this evening. It's "Go Forth With A Song."
May your life be filled with love. May your heart be filled with harmony. May your days be filled with joy. Go forth with a song. May your stars forever shine. May the wind be always at your back. May your skies be clear and bright. Go forth with a song. May peace and joy surround you. And may sunshine light your way. May music sound around you. May laughter fill your day. May your life be filled with love. May your heart be filled with harmony. May your days be filled with joy. Go forth with a song. May your life be filled with love. Go forth with a song.
Thank you very much. Our next selection is a bossa nova called "Sodansu Samba." This is written by Antonio Carlos Pobin. Please enjoy "Sodansu Samba." This will feature two soloists, Janice Singer and Eric Gomez. Once again, "Sodansu Samba," please enjoy.
Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Chodan se a trisante dimais. Manaus se mica se toca lipsa cha, cha, cha. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Chodan se a trisante dimais. Manaus se mica se toca lipsa cha, cha, cha. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Pa ra pa pa pa. Pa ra pa 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 ra. Pa ra pa pa pa. Tu ru tu 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 tu. Tu ru tu tu tu. Pa ra pa 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 ra. Pa 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 ra. Manaus se a trisante dimais. Manaus se mica se toca lipsa cha, cha, cha. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai. Vai, 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 vai. Sodansu samba, sodansu samba, vai.
Thank you so much. That was incredible. So talented. We are now going to move on to our next item, which is our new business. And it's consideration and action to vote on the collective bargaining agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and the Chelsea Administrators Association for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. The explanation is the Chelsea School Committee approves the collective bargaining agreement between the Chelsea School Committee and the CAA, ratified by the CAA Union on September 25th, 2024. I'd like to call Christine and Joe up to explain. I'm sorry, Christine Lee.
Good evening, School Committee. I am pleased to inform you that we are going to be presenting the Chelsea Administrator Association contract. We have reached a one-year agreement. The CAA is our second union to successfully settle and our contract in a short period of time. Our first union being the AFSMI unit, which comprises of our custodial food service workers and security guards. We are grateful for their continued collaboration and commitment to our staff, students, and families. Their partnership has been invaluable in ensuring the success of our district. A few highlights from this contract include the salary adjustment for this year, which is a 3% increase for the '24-'25 school year. And we are hopeful after this ratification that it will be reflected in their pay will be updated in about two to four pay cycles, so we're excited for that to ensure that the salaries are up to date. Another part of the agreement is the deputy principal position at CHS because CHS is a large high school, over 1,600 students. There was a need to have this new position, which is also 220 days instead of 215 days. And so there's additional details in your packets that you can certainly take a look, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Christine. Veronica, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Oregan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderas.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez. And city manager Maltese.
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and two absent.
In affirmative and two absent. Motion passes. Thank you. At this point, we'll move back up to presentations to finish that section. And I'll hand this over to Dr. Alveda.
I'm very excited to do the next two presentations. The first is our Name, Strength, and Story Awards. And this was created to really call out and shout out our amazing educators who we here are really answering the call of knowing our students by name, strength, and story. And so tonight, we have three, and this very well could be any of our educators. And so our first one is Miguel Hernando. Miguel, are you here? Miguel, are you here? Just stay right there, and I'll, I've got to tell them a little bit about you. So Miguel, I just, I wanted to thank you. During, as we all know, we were re-verifying McKinney Vinto. You were very concerned, and you sent me an email. And what I sensed in your email was a sense of urgency and concern for children. And I could tell that you cared deeply about our students and that you were concerned about students being disenrolled and everything. And you offered to help and call and come up with some solutions. And I really appreciate how you, you took it upon yourselves to email me and then say, can I collaborate? Can I help? And I'm so grateful for that. And just the passion that you spoke about with your students and that you knew them, it really, it really meant a lot. And I just, I wanted to say thank you. And so that's our first award. We'll go to Miguel, and I would love to give this to you in a cup that says, "Believe." So, and then, School Committee, we can come get it. All these labeled. Okay. Our second award is actually from Chelsea High School as well. This Name, Strength, and Story Award goes to Carlos Cora. There you are. Well, come on up. Come on up. Don't be shy. Okay. So Carlos, this, this was a shout out from a colleague that someone sent this to me about you. And I wanted to share it with the world. So I just want to reach out and let you know of the awesome job that counselor Carlos Cora has been doing. We had some issues with a student arriving to school and completing his work. Mr. Cora lives across the street from a student who was not arriving at school this year. Mr. Cora has begun meeting the student in the morning and going to get something to eat, and they walk to school together. The student expressed that he has a fear of walking into school and being bumped or knocked down. It was so nice to hear of a colleague going above and beyond to help out one of our students. I just thought that you should hear some good things about some of our staff. So, thank you. Carlos, thank you for going above and beyond, and, and thank you for loving our kids. Thank you. So we have a little something for you, too. Okay, and then next, this is a third Name, Strength, and Story Award. And this goes to Samuel Vega. This actually, Samuel, is coming from a former student who is now an adult. That, and it went to Ms. Blanca Restrepo, your principal. Then she shared it with me, and so I'm going to read what he wrote. And then he says, "Hello, Principal Restrepo. I am Christian de Jesus Franco, a former student at Berkowitz between 2007 and 2010. I'm getting in touch because I saw Mr. Vega, my math teacher, in the 2009, 2010 on Fox News and wanted to reach out. I was hoping you could convey to him how grateful I am to have had him as my teacher. Mr. Vega taught me so much, and he is one of those teachers who will always stand out in my memory. Please pass along my appreciation to Mr. Smith as well, if he's still around. Despite being a special education student, Mr. Vega always treated us with equality just like any other students. As a result, I have become a supervisor at Eastern Bank, a member of the planning board for the city of Chelsea, and the senior warden, board of directors for St. Luke's, San Lucas Episcopal Church here in Chelsea. I recall his words in class, 'Believe in what you want to become when you grow up.' I use that advice to drive me where I am now. Thank you so much, Mr. Vega. I have missed you, and I admire what you are still doing. Sincerely, Christian de Jesus Franco." And then our last Name, Strength, and Story Award goes to Ms. Meg, our principal of Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy. Ms. Meg Mancini, are you here, Meg? So Meg, I, I just wanted to shout you out because I know how much you care about our children. Ms. Mancini is a principal who will take students to college, get their dorm set up, make sure they have financial aid, and then continue to follow up with students. And two weekends, a weekend ago, she sent me a text with the student and said, "Almi, could you encourage her?" She struggled, she just, and so I was able to exchange a text with a former student who's now a freshman in college. And I was like, "Meg, how do you do it? You're making sure our students not only get to college, but then succeed and finish." And I am so grateful for all that you do, and just thank you for reaching out to our kids and loving them. And we just have a little something for you. Ms. Mancini already has a cup. Okay, and the next presentation actually goes to a school. And the school that we are recognizing is the Berkowitz. And because the Berkowitz is actually deemed a school of recognition, and so Desi has defined a school of recognition as a school that demonstrates progress towards annual accountability targets with an emphasis on the performance of all students in the school and the school's lowest performing students group. So the Berkowitz had a 7% increase in ELA and a 23% increase in math. And we know that our, we know that it starts at the top with leadership, but we also know, and speaking to Blanca, that it is a whole team. It's everybody at the Berkowitz, all the teachers, all the administrators at the Berkowitz working together to really improve instruction for our students. And we're just so proud of the work that the Berkowitz as an entire school is, is doing. And so, Blanca, I don't know who's here from your team, Blanca and Kathleen, but we'd love for you to come and accept this award. It says, "Recognition Award Presented to the William A. Berkowitz School in Honor of Your Commitment to Achieving Excellence." So we just have a little something for you to hang in your, in the office.
Are you finished now?
Yeah, I am finished. We are finished, and we can go back to the comments. Up, down, up, down.
Good. Okay, at this moment, we'll go back to, back to order and go back to our public comment sectors, section, I don't know where I got sector from, section. If anyone needs interpretation, I forgot to mention this earlier, you can see Michael. Wave your hand so that he knows. And anyone who has public comment, please come up. Put your name and your information on the form and go up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak. You ready?
I'm ready.
You are ready.
I have been ready for the last 40 minutes. Good evening.
Now give me a second because I'm not ready.
This thing on? Yeah. Good evening, my name is Vanessa Mendoza Mercado. I live in 318 Chestnut Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts. Members have gathered here tonight to show support of CTU's proposals as we continue to negotiate our contracts. In addition to sharing testimony tonight, we are presenting School Committee members a petition with hundreds and hundreds of signatures in support of our contract proposals. We are here to advocate, not complain. What we're asking for is affordable and necessary to keep good people in the district, working with our students, and being members of our community. About 20% of CTU members are residents of Chelsea, including myself. I work in this district because I love my community. When we are negotiating with leaders who insist that living wages, humane leave, and class size caps aren't possible in Chelsea, I worry about the beliefs we hold about my home. In addition to living wages, changes to our contract language are needed to improve the learning conditions of students. We recognize our shared value of supporting our schools, especially with the additional paraprofessionals, MLEs, counselors, social workers, and special educators that have been added over the years. But when we look at the ratios between our staff and students, and we look at the district performance on standardized assessments, it's clear we need to do more. We have laid out a clear plan about what to do, and our members will share why that's so important. We need you to help us keep moving forward to create the schools our students deserve. Thank you.
My name is Brittany Fitzgibbon. My partner Sam Chirco and I live at 74 Hadley Street in Malden. We live with our two children. We both teach at Chelsea High School. I have been a teacher at Chelsea High School for 10 years. I love Chelsea, and I especially love the children and families of Chelsea Public Schools. And so I hope that building my own family, having my own children, would be supported, maybe even celebrated by our district. Part of districts' deplorable parental leave made that impossible. Multiple rounds of COVID, RSV, the flu, and norovirus have devastated our supply of sick days. Three years ago, Sam was hit by a drunk driver. Despite the medical and emotional trauma, Sam tried to return to school immediately because educators know we need to save our sick days for when we really need them. And what we mean is that we need to save them for parental leave. So every year, teachers like Chirco teach through pesky things like concussions, damaged eyesight, and neck braces because you've made the ability to have a family contingent on our willingness to ignore basic health concerns. Last year in December, I got a cold, a very bad cold. I knew I needed to save my days to keep my family from complete financial devastation when our child was born, so I kept coming to school. Every day, kids asked me if I was coming in the next day. They were genuinely sympathetic and concerned. I thought if I could only make it to winter break, it would be okay, and I could recover then. Winter break came, and I wasn't getting better. I kept coughing and getting lightheaded. On New Year's Eve, I coughed again and then screamed. My body was spasming, and I was in agony. We spent the last day of 2023 in the ER. It's now apparent that I probably had a respiratory infection for a month. In an effort to preserve my sick days for parental leave, I had ignored my sickness and coughed myself into a muscle tear along my rib cage and abdomen. Six months pregnant, and I couldn't cough, or laugh, or sit up, or lie down without violent agonizing spasms. I ended up needing to take an entire week off school because I could not stand up or sit down unassisted. My partner, a fellow CHS teacher, had to take a week off to help me with basic movement. By the time our son was born, we had almost no sick days left. The current policy means educators who want to start families have to come to school sick, work... sick, work through illness, and ignore their health. Ultimately, this results in teachers taking off more time. What could have been two sick days for a single educator last winter turned into two teachers missing a week of school. That's multiple paid substitutes, multiple days of instruction loss, hundreds of students without high-quality instruction. The current policy guarantees more disruptions and money spent than merely giving us a humane parental leave policy. The other alternative, if you won't agree to a humane and dignified parental leave, is for educators to quit and go to a district that has a humane and dignified leave policy, and that happens regularly, which is why every year Chelsea High School has 30 or 40 new educators to replace the ones who reached their breaking point. Sam and I have not chosen to leave Chelsea Public Schools, not yet. On March 28th, I actively went into labor in the middle of teaching my second-period AP World History class. It isn't a funny story of dedication, it's a sad story of financial anxiety.
Go ahead.
Mm-hmm. I'll take him. I got him. Where'd you leave home?
Every hour worked.
My name is Sam Chirco. I use any pronouns. I'm also a teacher at Chelsea High School. As Brittany was saying, this isn't a funny story of dedication, it's a sad story of financial anxiety. Every hour worked was a few more dollars standing between us and months of debt, stress, and fiscal uncertainty. Instead of our parental leave spent making memories with our children, we sat up late crying, calculating, feeling ashamed to ask our friends and family for money. Guaranteed paid parental leave is better for Chelsea Public Schools, students, and families. Finally, and it breaks our heart to know that I need to beg for parental leave, that we need to frame our parental leave in terms of how it is good for students. That paid family leave, which is guaranteed to almost every working person in Massachusetts, is outright denied to teachers. How can you justify making it impossible to let Brittany's body heal, to bond with our child, to feel secure in our position? How can you ask us to take care of your children, to love them, to nurture them, and then deny us the possibility to care for and love and nurture our own children? Paid parental leave must be guaranteed. It is the only ethical choice. It is the right thing to do. You shouldn't need a speech to tell you that. I yield my time.
Hey, all. Good evening. My name is Elias Carver. I'm from, I live at 11 Spring Street in Malden. I teach US History and AP US History at Chelsea High School. And I'm here today to talk about the necessity of having limits to our class sizes in our contract. Over the summer, I was informed that I would be teaching AP US History to our incoming sophomores at Chelsea High School. I was extremely excited. It's one of the classes that I've always dreamed of teaching. And I knew that taking the class would be a challenge. It's going to be a lot of work, and we spent a lot of time working on writing, which means I was going to be grading a lot of writing, and I do grade a lot of writing. When I saw that my two sections of AP US History were 40 students and 38 students, my stomach dropped. I wasn't even sure if I was going to have enough desks to fit in the classroom for my students. I was envisioning having to have them stand in the first period, which was embarrassing. I did, but I knew that my job just got a lot harder. And on top of that, I have two US One classes, which means I roughly have about 140 different students this year. The effect this has on me is one thing, but the effect this really has on our students is just so much worse. APUS is a uniquely difficult class. It's often a massive difficulty bump for our sophomores from what they've been doing previously for their entire academic career. This means that each of my students often needs individual, concerted, consistent, focused support and feedback, and it's my duty to provide that to them, to help them feel empowered instead of lost. When I have a classroom of 40 students, that's impossible. I can't do that. I've had a lot of teary conversations over the last couple of weeks with my students who feel like they're drowning, who feel like they're lost, and it really, really hurts my soul that I have to sit there, and I know that they can succeed, but I also know that I can't literally provide the support that they need to succeed, except if it's after school or something like that. But the Chelsea Teachers Union is fighting to put language that limits the class sizes on our contract, and that's absolutely necessary, not just to prevent burnout for the teachers, but to be able to provide good instruction and quality instruction that our students deserve. So, thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Hi, my name is Allison Gorman-Hill. I live at 9 Church Lane in Burlington. I am currently in my seventh year as an ELA teacher at Clark Avenue Middle School. Since I was young, I always knew I want two things for my future. I wanted to be a teacher and I wanted to be a mother. When I was new in the profession, my family would always tell me, "Teaching is a great job if you want to have a family." And it felt true. I saw all of my coworkers getting off work at the same time as their children, got to spend the summers with them. But in the, when I had my first daughter, Georgia, in December of 2020, I realized it was much more complicated than that. Just days after I had Georgia, the new Massachusetts law that would grant paid parental leave went into effect. This, unfortunately, would not apply to my maternity leave. This would not apply to any of the teachers, paraprofessionals, social workers, counselors, therapists, or any other incredible staff members in Chelsea Public School. In December 2020, when I was worrying about becoming a mother and giving birth during a global pandemic, my job gave me one more thing to worry about. Do I have enough sick time to cover a maternity leave? Thankfully, I did have enough time to cover my first maternity leave. However, when I gave birth to my second daughter, Phoebe, in February of 2023, I did not have enough sick time saved up. Being a parent to a small child means you need to use your sick time more often. I was able to save, I was able to save up for my first maternity leave because I was only taking sick days for myself. After becoming a mother, the majority of my sick days would go to my sick child. It's nearly impossible to save up enough sick time to cover parental leave once you already have a child. This becomes completely impossible when you factor in desired age differences between children and the desire to have children sooner due to biological or medical reasons. Being a mother has made me a better teacher. It has become my strength. I treat each child that enters my classroom the way I want my daughters treated in school, with love, compassion, and fierce encouragement. However, I do not feel that the current contract, nor what district leadership is currently offering in negotiations, supports me as a mother. Many staff members in our district are being forced to make an inhumane choice when they are expecting a child, make a financial sacrifice, and take an adequate sick leave, or take an adequate maternity leave, or go back to work when you are mentally and physically not able to. Mothers are returning to work in our schools bleeding and aching for their babies. Mothers are returning to work in our schools caring for other people's children because they cannot afford to stay home with their own. When a dog gives birth, it is considered cruel and inhumane to separate it from its baby, from its, from its mother, separate the puppy from its mother until they're eight weeks, eight weeks old. In the state of Massachusetts and 21 other states in the country, it is actually illegal. It's not just cruel. The district administration is offering what is considered unethical and illegal for dogs. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah McAllister. I live at 410 Summer Street, North Annover, Massachusetts. I'm in my sixth year as a special education teacher at the Clark. I am also expecting my first baby due in just a few weeks. It has taken me six years to save my sick time for a 12-week maternity leave. I am fortunate to have started in Chelsea right out of college and to have had the opportunity to accrue this sick time. For many, this is not the case. I love my school. I love my colleagues. And most importantly, I love my students. Due to our district not providing paid maternity leave, it is very likely I will not be able to return next year. I am one of three inclusion teachers at the Clark. We currently have five special education teacher vacancies, and there is no plan to replace me when I go out on leave. There is currently no special education teacher in the seventh grade leaving 31 students without their mandated services. Come November, there will be no special education teacher in the fifth grade leaving an additional 29 students without their mandated services. I have been told we have had no applicants for any of these positions. The Clark has not had a fully-staffed special education department in years. Over my six years here, I have seen so many amazing teachers leave our district because the lack, the lack of parental leave benefits. It is extremely disheartening that teachers are forced to make a decision between our students and the families we desire to have. In a district where the retention of teachers is a huge problem, the lack of empathy in denying us this basic human right is astounding. It is resulting in our students losing highly qualified teachers who want to be here and the schools being unable to replace them. Students are being left without services legally required by their IEPs. Or access to high-quality teachers because a substitute or paraprofessional are in those positions. This contract has the potential to change these circumstances. Many surrounding districts are providing paid parental leave in contracts that attract teachers to work there. These are the districts I will be applying to if I am not able to come back to Chelsea. By providing 12 weeks of paid parental leave benefit, we will not only attract high-quality teachers, but will be giving them an incentive to stay. Under the current contract, the situation is quite the opposite. Thank you.
Gina Restiano, 7 Cider Mill Road, Saugus, Mass. But at this rate, I should probably just pay rent to Chelsea High School because I am there so often. I've been a physical educator in Chelsea for the last seven years. I've played many roles in this district. I've been a health teacher. I am the lead mentor with Becky Starr. I have been the basketball coach. I've been the soccer coach. I've been the softball coach. You name it, I've done it. I've been in this city for seven years. I love this city and I love these kids. Every year, Paula Zanberg asks me if I want to buy a jacket that says, "Chelsea Public Schools: Bridge to Success." Well, today, I am here to be the bridge. As a phys ed teacher at Chelsea High School, I have not had a class of 30 students in five years. In fact, there was a year my classes were so overloaded to the point where I was compensated with an extra stipend. That is how out of control it was. The money was nice, but the students' education suffered. The last five years, I have been given the same two rationales. There is no space, and there is not enough teachers. When my class is overloaded, it's not just an extra kid, it's an extra student for me to manage, to teach, to write a pass for, to answer a question, to incorporate into my lesson, and to account for. Now multiply that by the other three teachers I co-teach with, then add in having one less gym to the, one less gym due to the construction. There are now 120-plus students in one gym. This has caused a significant amount of anxiety for a lot of students. Students who used to love gym no longer do because they are nervous to be around such a large group of people. Lessons, it's almost impossible to run a lesson. We don't have enough equipment, we don't have enough space, and we can only give a fraction of what we'd be able to give with a smaller class size. I've been to five graduations. Every graduation, I hear the same two words being used to describe our students. We say they are resourceful. We say they are gritty. And you're right about that. However, it took gritty and resourceful teachers to get them there. Our success as a district is based off of graduation rate scores, passing. The Berkowitz School, 23% increase. That is by dedicated, gritty, and resourceful teachers. Plain and simple, pay these teachers. Pay them what they are owed. They are the boots on the ground. They are the pillars to the success of the district. They are on the front lines in the ever-evolving war that is education in the post-COVID era. Check out SchoolSpring, the teacher job website. The options are absolutely limitless. You can get a teaching job in any subject, anywhere, doing anything you want. Take it from me, lead mentor Gina. We had a first-year biology teacher quit last Friday. He's now working in a different district in the surrounding area for more money. When we fail to pay teachers what they are rightfully owed, they find a way to get it somewhere else. That somewhere is just down the street.
Hi, everyone. My name is Catherine Anderson. I live at 15 Powder House Terrace, number three in Somerville. I'm the president of the Chelsea Teachers Union and a special education teacher at the Brown. The Chelsea Teachers Union has been bargaining in good faith with management since February, with our first round of proposals being presented in March. We have been working without a contract since July 1st. Our schools are facing a crisis. Turnover and burnout are high, and student achievement is lower than our kids deserve. While our staff is dedicated and hardworking, it is clear that our current working conditions are getting in the way of our children's success. We heard from members tonight about parental leave, class size, and the need for competitive wages. These are common sense solutions that will help to address this crisis. We've received support from hundreds and hundreds of members for these proposals, over 87% of our membership district-wide. We have made movement at the bargaining table. We've offered shared decision-making for the sick bank, moved thousands of dollars on wages, added 50 minutes to the school week, and moved on or even withdrawn language proposals that matter to our members. We're trying to understand why the district is unwilling to discuss the rejection of proposals that are low to no cost, but would enhance the working and learning conditions for our school community. Proposals like clarifying timelines for family conferences and eliminating inequitable and unnecessary meetings. We're trying to understand why the district was interested in extending the school day by 30 minutes, but is rejecting our proposal to move in that direction by adding a portion of that this year. We've brought proposals to the table that address our retention and educational crisis. At the negotiating table, we have heard that we can't afford competitive living wages, that we can't afford reasonable ratios, and that we can't afford humane leave policies. However, the school committee approved single-year raises for the central office pay tiers of up to 7%. We have more than doubled the number of district-wide administrators from 20 to 42. That's just the district-wide, not building-based. And after six months of bargaining, we're still asking for things like living wages and humane leave. But what we're seeing in our classrooms and in our community is that we can't afford business-as-usual in Chelsea Public Schools. It's time to make the kinds of big, bold changes that will give our kids the education they deserve. We're relying on you. We need to get there, and we need to get there now. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, thank you so much for everyone who spoke, and we will move on to our next area, which is the report of the superintendent. I move on to Dr. Albeda.
I'd like to call up Dr. Tamara Blake Canty to go over our success indicators. Dr. Blake, if you can wait a couple of minutes. Dr. Blake, if you can wait a couple minutes.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the amazing opportunity to share our indicators of success, which are connected to our district's school priorities. It's also a way in which we hold ourselves accountable as a district to make sure all of our brilliant students are college and career-ready. Impressively, from kindergarten through eighth grade, we have over ninety percent of our students who have attended school this month. For our high school, grades nine through twelve, we have mid-eighty-six percent of our students who have been present. For our third indicator of success, which is our priority one, our priority one is rigorous and culturally relevant instruction for all students. For Algebra I, this school year, we have seventy-three students. AP courses, we have three-hundred-ninety-nine students enrolled. For our calculus courses, we have ninety students. For early college courses, we have two-hundred-twenty-six students. For Indicator Seven, AP courses, we have three-hundred-ninety-two students enrolled this school year. For Indicator Ten, our high school dropout, we're just at one-point-six-three percentage, which is less than last year. And for our last indicator of success, our mobility rate, as a district, totally, we've accepted two-hundred-seventeen students with one-hundred-thirty-two students departing. That's the difference of eighty-five students. Thank you. If you do have any questions for me, please direct them to our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Abada, and she will relay them on to me.
Thank you, Dr. Blake Canty. Our next presentation is actually part of our indicators of success. And yearly, we do present on MCAS, our MCAS results. So I'm going to go ahead and go through that. Wait for Malik. Thank you, Malik.
You're welcome.
Great. So, these are highlights. I'm not going to get into the weeds, but these are, look at this data from about thirty thousand feet. So for our state, twenty-twenty, twenty-four, MCAS trends, this is statewide. ELA results show lower achievement in all grades from the previous year. And then math results showed improved achievement in grade three amongst relatively flat results in most grades. And then science results showed improved achievement in grades five and ten with lower achievements in grade eight. Again, this is for the state. And then when we look at Chelsea, we mirrored the state in ELA as we did drop two percent. We had slight gains in math, a raw one percent increase, which really is pretty flat. And then science performance was stagnant, just as it was with the state. So we basically mirrored the state with lighter gains in math than the state. So if you look at our demographics, and I do think it's important, and there's a reason why I put this in here, you can see where we are at Chelsea Public Schools. You can see where we have higher first language, not English. You can see to the far right than the state in comparison to the state. And you can also see that we have, our students have higher needs. That's the second, the last, the second-last bar down compared to the state. And then, of course, we have eighty-seven percent of our students are Hispanic-Latino. So just, I do think it's important to take a look at that. As you see, we're definitely different than the state as far as demographics is concerned. So for ELA, we, again, we were, we dropped two percent. And you can see where it's forty percent, fourteen percent of our students were exceeding our meeting expectations. But if you look at student growth, you'll see that we had forty-four percent. Many of our students showed growth, and we scored forty-four on growth. And then in math, we had a slight increase of one percent. You can see the, you can see the graph there. And then our student growth was forty-three percent higher. And then, if you go into science, it's very, it's flat growth. And we had fifteen, fifteen percent students exceed our meet expectations. And then looking at our accountability status, when you look at this chart, and this is on the DUCY website, you can see here where we've made thirty-nine percent moderate progress towards goals. And, and then you can see from last year to this year, the growth. So in twenty, in twenty-three, we had thirty-eight percent. We were at thirty-eight percent, then we moved to forty. And then there was a weight which applied. There's forty percent to sixty percent. So that was, we made moderate progress towards our goals. And the reason why we are classified and need a focus or targeted support is because our graduation rate is as lower than what we need it to be. So it's the graduation rate that has us classified in this area because we have made growth. And then on the next slide, just again, this is thirty thousand feet. Growth areas. We have areas that we need to improve, middle grades, high school grades, and our graduation rates. And then our glows, as we demonstrated earlier, elementary growth and proficiency rates. And then we had growth at the Berkowitz at double digits in math. And so we just celebrated our Berkowitz Elementary School for there being a school of recognition. And what I will say about the glows is that this is, in elementary, when we see three of our, our four schools had growth in both areas. This is, last year was our second year of implementing high-quality instructional materials. And any year when you're implementing high-quality instructional materials, you're one, you do see a little bit of a dip. And we definitely saw that in the middle grades. And we're looking, we know that we'll see that go back up. And the elementary is actually, was ahead of us in the implementation of high-quality instructional materials. So we do know, what I will say is, if I had to choose a headline, is that we are on the right track. And the other, the middle and the high school grades will also get there. But we do have a long ways to go. So any questions? If not, we can move on. I know, Malik, I know you were prepared to do summer programming highlights, but that did not make the agenda. So we will post, what I'll do is, we can do that in a subcommittee. Okay. So now, go ahead and turn it over to our chair for a student representative update.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Abada, Madam Chairwoman Hernandez, and everyone else on the Chelsea School Committee. Thank you all for having me here and being a representative, not only for my school, but for the Chelsea community as a whole. I'm planning to go to college next year in the fall of 2025, majoring in biology and get my Bachelor of Science in nursing. I like to hit long gym sessions with my little brother or either myself or my sister. We have a huge family, so that's really great. I love being able to express my mind through school, attaining great things in my extracurricular activities such as yearbook debate, La Vida Scholars, National Honor Society, and being a role model for other students that I'm here to do today. Being a school, being a student at Chelsea High School, I have all the insight of all my education. So I would like to make it aware of all the things we can improve and also highlight in our school. Thank you all for having me today. And I will now pass it on to my fellow student representative, Diana.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Abada, Madam Chairwoman Hern- Good evening. Superintendent Abada, Madam Chairwoman Hernandez, and the rest of the committee. I am honored to be able to be here with you all today. My name is Diana Salinas Garcia, and I'm a senior at Chelsea High School. I was born in Illo Vasco de Salvador, and my goal is to be more engaged in the diverse Chelsea community. I aspire to graduate from Chelsea High School knowing I was able to play a crucial role in being able to bring the Chelsea community more together by being a student representative.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Abada, Madam Chairwoman Hernandez, and to the rest of the committee. I hope everyone's had a wonderful week so far. And thank you, everybody, to attending tonight's school committee meeting. I want to start off by saying thank you to have been selected to be here and to work with this wonderful panel for the next school year to create change and represent the voices of Chelsea. My name is Rosalia Hernandez, and I am a senior at Chelsea High School. I hope to gain experience here to strengthen skills that I'm eager to bring into my freshman year of college, where I will hopefully be studying STEM and minoring in political science. I'm excited for, to work with my fellow student reps and the rest of the committee and more to create a long-lasting change in the public school system and Chelsea in general. And again, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity, and I'm excited for what's in store in the future. Thank you.
So I wanted to highlight some things. Family night was about a week or two and a half ago. The teacher conference went really well. Parents were able to engage with students at curricular activities in school and also talk to teachers on what they need to catch up on. The athletic department, girls volleyball team, will be having, they made a remarkable comeback after they defeated the Malden Nedlums after losing some previous games in the earlier season. But like I said, they made an awesome comeback. The next home game for football is on October 18th, 2024, at the CHS Stadium. And Cross Country is actually having their senior night today. So let's wish them a good luck. So woo!
Sorry. Moving on to clubs. The Yearbook Club has finally finalized a contract with Justin Yearbook Avenue. This means the Yearbook Club can finally start working on the 2025 yearbook. There was a survey sent out to decide what the theme of the yearbook would be, and the winning theme was the 2000s. The National Honor Society hosted its first bake sale of the year on October 3rd, which was, which went successfully. The bake sale lasted approximately thirty minutes before being completely sold out. On another note, shout-out to Angelina Agostini for the courageous act of deepening civic engagement in CIA tests with a voter registration drive. She successfully got over twenty-five students to pre-register to vote during the launch periods of October 3rd and October 4th. This upcoming Friday, October 11th, there will be a student council election for the class of 2028 during all launches at CHS.
On our next upcoming events in the following two weeks, we will have pep rally, which is really, really exciting for our CHS seniors finally graduating. We're going to have it from Monday, October 21st to Friday, October 25th. On Monday, we're doing Dynamic Duo. Tuesday, servers and bikers. Wednesday, meme and celebrity day. Thursday is Decades Day, which freshmen will dress up as 2000s. Sophomores will dress up as 90s. Juniors will dress up as 80s. And seniors, obviously, the 70s. Fridays will be class colors. And I'm just so excited as being secretary of the student council at my school. I'm so excited to graduate with my fellow student representatives. And thank you again for giving me a voice on the student representative committee.
And welcome, and thank you for being part of this group.
Sorry. Can you come to our meetings too, please?
Don't try to take our student reps.
Yeah, you get, we have plenty of students.
But you can borrow them. We'll move on to our second up. In consideration of time, I'm going to ask for a motion to move our subcommittee minutes to records.
You can do, you can submit all of these for the record.
I'll submit all of the subcommittee minutes for the record. And make a motion. Okay, and I'll move on to new business. And we'll pick up from the next one, which is consideration in action to accept grant award of fifty dollars from the Chelsea Education Foundation for school year 2024 to 2025. Veronica, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderras.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
And Ms. Enriquez. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent. Motion passes. Consideration in action to accept a gift in the amount of five thousand dollars from the Rulie Goldsmith Charitable Account for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Roll call, Veronica?
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderras.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent. Motion passes. Consideration in action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve an out-of-state overnight field trip for two Chelsea High School students and five chaperones to Kentucky for the bar reimagination, reimagination work for Chelsea High School, school redesign from October 21st to October 24th, 2024. Roll call, Veronica?
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderras.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
And Ms. Enriquez.
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent. Motion passes. Consideration in action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve out-of-state an overnight field trip for Chelsea Opportunity Academy students, I'm sorry, two Chelsea Opportunity Academy students and two chaperones to New Orleans, Louisiana to present at the Aurora Museum. to present at the Aurora Symposium Conference. I'm sorry, I have something in my eye, and I'm having a really hard time. Okay, that's. With the Bar Foundation from November second to November fifth, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderas.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Next students will present at the Aurora Simp-, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. Consideration action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve an overnight field trip for twelve Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy students and two chaperones to visit five Western Massachusetts colleges and stay overnight from November fourteenth to November fifteenth, 2024. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderas.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Ms. Alfaro moves to approve the homeschooling petitions for eight Chelsea families, ten students in total. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Yes.
Ms. Valderas.
Yes.
Dr. Neville.
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez. That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Thank you, Veronica. And we will now move on to communications. Letter from Boston University Consortium Council acknowledging Julie Shay.
Do you want one of us to read it? No? Malik, can you read that for us?
Absolutely. Dear Superintendent Albeda, the Boston University Consortium is a longstanding partnership of eight local school districts, Boston, Brookline, Chelsea, Everett, Framingham, Lexington, Newton, and Somerville, and the BU Wheelock College of Education and Human Development, who work collaboratively to enhance educational quality for all. As we reflect on the close of another school year, we want to express our gratitude to the leaders of the consortium districts for your support for our work together. On behalf of the Consortium Council and the BU Wheelock faculty, thank you for your continued commitment to our partnership. As per the consortium bylines, each district identifies two educators to serve as representative of the BU Consortium Council. The district representatives are expected to participate in all council meetings, provide useful information to help consortium-related initiatives, and serve as liaisons between the council and the district by actively communicating consortium events and initiatives across the district. The Chelsea representative, Julie Shay, is an invaluable asset to our work, and we would like to formally commend them for their contributions to the consortium during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Because of their active participation in the consortium, we were able to advance our mission of improving the preparation and professional development of prospective and current educational professionals for work in diverse community environments. We truly hope that Julie will be able to serve as representative on the consortium again next year. If for some reason they are not able to do so, we appreciate your assistance in appointing new representatives for the Chelsea Public Schools to the Consortium Council. The consortium is so fortunate to work with amazing educational communities like the Chelsea Public Schools. Thank you for your continued support of the Boston University Wheelock College of Education and Human Development as we look, and we look forward to working together again next year. With appreciation, Dr. Aaron Breconiecki.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that. Moving on to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make?
I just want to welcome the new student reps. Welcome to school committee. I was absent last time, but I think this might be your first one, maybe. But yeah, welcome, and I hope that this is a productive experience for y'all, and you learned something from this. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. I want to ask if everybody could please keep the state of Florida in your hearts, in your prayers. I myself have a lot of family right in the area where this is hitting. And I know there's a lot of people in Chelsea who have family in Florida. So I just ask that everybody keep them in your hearts. And I thank everybody who came out today, whether it was to perform, to present, to speak, for taking your time. I was incredibly proud of the students that presented. They always fill our hearts. Whenever we get to see students come and share their talents with us, I have absolutely no singing talent whatsoever. So whenever I can see their students with such talent, it fills my heart. And with that.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I just want to shout out, because it's the beginning of the year, that I've been seeing that the school site councils are starting up. And shout out to everyone who's been involved. It's a really important thing for our schools to run school site councils at the ELC. Where my son goes, we had, I think, four parents running for voting seats, which is really exciting. So I encourage everyone to get involved in their school site councils, and thank you to everyone who's volunteers.
Thank you. And Lucia, motions to adjourn?
Second.
The meeting is adjourned.